Good evening. Welcome to the regular city council meeting of August 14th, the City of Farmington Hills. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and please join me as we recite the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is roll call. Mayor Barnett?
Here.
Councilmember Bolware?
Here.
Bruce?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Massey?
Here.
Newland?
Here.
Now note that Councilmember Bridges is absent. Okay, next is the roll call. Oh, we just did that. Next is correspondence. No, next, approval of the agenda. I will get it right.
How about, would you like a motion?
I would.
Madam Mayor, I would move approval of the agenda as published.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Dr. Bruce. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item is the correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence that we didn't all receive to report? Okay, I received a few from our school board meeting of last week. I'm sure we all received that, as well as some handouts. And another one related to a problem some residents are having where we're doing some water main replacements, and mostly dealing with landscape issues, and those are being covered by the city already, so we're good to go on those. And next is the consent agenda. The consent agenda, all items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine, administrative, and non-controversial by the city council and will be administered by, enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the items may be removed from the consent agenda for consideration. I now turn it over to Dr. Randy Bruce, our mayor pro tem, to read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number two, consideration of approval of rescheduling the regular city council meeting of September 25th, 2023 to September 18th, 2023. Number three, recommended approval of purchase of chemicals for pools and splash pad to Town and Country Pools Incorporated in the amount of $20,000, CMR 82393. Number four, recommended approval of award of bid for new patrol rifle systems for the police department to Acme Sports Incorporated in the amount of $49,000, CMR 82394. Number five, recommended approval of award of bid for the 2023 pavement marking program to PK Contracting LLC in the amount not to exceed $370,000 per year with possible extensions, CMR 82395. Number six, recommended approval purchase of fleet vehicles with Lung Hammer Ford for four vehicles in the amount of $181,734, Burger Chevrolet for two vehicles in the amount of $73,992, and Tom Winsel Buick GMC for seven vehicles in the amount of $309,274, CMR 82396. Number seven, recommended approval of payment for emergency repair of first floor plumbing at the Hock to Guardian Plumbing in the amount of $24,000, CMR 82397. Number eight, recommended approval of award of annual testing for the fire department apparatus to National Host Testing Specialties in the estimated annual amount of $13,000 for fiscal years 2023 and 2024, CMR 82398. Number nine, recommended approval of collective bargaining agreement with Technical Professional and Office Workers Association of Michigan, TPOAM, CMR 82399. Number 10, recommended approval of the 2024 Auto Theft Prevention Act, ATPA, sub-recipient agreement with Oakland County, CMR 823100. Number 11, recommended approval of agreement for consulting services for Medicare and Medicaid audit with Digitec Computer LLC in an amount not to exceed $35,000, CMR 823101. Number 12, recommended approval of the establishment of traffic control order, TM 108 2023, to prohibit left turns from eastbound 10 Mile Road to northbound Raphael Road, CMR 823102. Number 13, recommended approval of a special event permit for the Iscon Temple Community Color Festival to be held on Saturday, August 26th, 2023. Number 14, recommended approval of a special event permit for the Iscon Temple Annual Festival to be held on Wednesday, September 6th, 2023 through Sunday, September 10th, 2023. Number 15, recommended approval of a request for employment under Section 10.01A of the city charter for a theater AV tech assistant. Number 16, recommended approval of a request for employment under Section 10.01A of the city charter for a Hawks Nest aide. Number 17, recommended approval of city council study session meeting minutes of July 24th, 2023. And number 18, recommended approval of city council regular session minutes of July 24th, 2023.
Thank you for reading almost the entire agenda to us. Appreciate it. Is there a motion? Ms. Bolware?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's read by the mayor pro tem, Randy Bruce.
Oh.
Oh, okay. Items number 2 through 18 as read from the agenda.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there, moved by Councilmember Bolware, seconded by Councilmember Newland. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in fa, oh, roll call vote. Councilmembers Newland?
Yes.
Bolware?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett? Yes. And I guess that now brings us to public questions and comments. Anybody can come forward and speak for up to five minutes. At four and a half minutes, I will probably raise my hand like this and twist it just so that it, you know, so that you kind of know that you've got 30 seconds left. So you don't need to fill out a form to come forward for this. You can just come up to the mic and speak your piece. And if it is a question that needs some referral to staff, we will certainly do that for you. Does anybody want to come forward?
Testing one, two. Okay. You ready, Madam Mayor?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good evening to the mayor, to the council, the city administrator, the clerk, and everybody in the auditorium for the meeting tonight. I just wanted to give a shout out to the Farmington Hills Police Chief Jeff King and the Southfield Police Chief Elvin Baron for coming together, putting on such a wonderful event, the town hall study session regarding gun violence. It was just brilliant to get five law enforcement executives at the table to do what people often accuse the police and administration of not doing, and that is listening. These five police chiefs were listening to the public. It was the people's forum. They got an opportunity to speak like they've never been able to speak at no other event. The question that we posed to the audience... I'm getting emotional. Is it possible to reduce gun violence? If so, what is the solution and how do we accomplish it? And for the entire time, people were giving those solutions. The dialogue was happening. So I just want to thank the people from all the five jurisdictions for coming to support the two chiefs and the other law enforcement executives. I want to thank the council members that came, and it was council members from a variety of the different places, mayor, mayor pro tem. We had a former investigative reporter, Ronnie Dahl, as the moderator, and it was just an amazing turnout, so much so that there are going to be meetings or a series of town hall study sessions. So I just want to thank the public and be on the lookout on the city's website. There are events coming. They're in the planning process right now. And again, thank you so much to our chief and Southfield chief and the other law enforcement for just having an awesome event.
Thank you. I know you had a part in arranging that, and I want to thank you for doing that as
Good evening, and again, thank you for being who you are, our city mayor, well, my city mayor and my city council. I am proud to be a resident here in Farmington, Farmington Hills for the past 26 years, but I'm not speaking as a resident tonight. I am speaking as a Farmington Public School Board member. I want to thank each and every one of you, especially our city manager and the city attorney, for coming out, and each and every one of you, supporting Farmington Public Schools at our meeting, which was not a joint meeting. It was a meeting by the board. It was a meeting by the Board of Education, and you all were our guests. I want to apologize for that because we are supposed to work collaboratively as a city and as elected officials. When our schools are in danger and in trouble, our city is in trouble. As I have come to you before and asked for your help to come and help us at FAPN, which is Farmington African American Parent Network, and help our students with our achievement gap and with our strategic planning. It was insulting for our mayors of both cities and our city councils to have been censored. We need all of us to work together to help the students, for the betterment of all of the students in this community and the parents as well. So again, I thank you, but I also apologize. I will be planning to amend those meetings tomorrow night so that it will state that it was not a collaborative working agreement. So I thank you again, and have a good night, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. I know that was difficult for you, and I appreciate all the hard work you put into serving our students and our teachers every day, and we're looking forward to school start and to being a part of any solutions that we can come up with to make sure that our students thrive and survive and do the best they can, and make sure that our schools remain safe and our community a welcoming one. So thank you very much, Trustee Smith. I really appreciate you being here tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone, pro tem, excuse me, mayor and city council. My name is Miki Godfrey, and I am a resident of the Farmington Hills community for almost 10 years. I'm here to speak to you, to apprise you of some issues that I've been having with the zoning department of Farmington Hills. I'm going to be very blunt today and very blatant, but always respectful, but that's the only way that I know how to communicate. I want to be honest. To make a long story short, we had a very large storm that hit us around the end of February or March. I think you all remember that. It was unexpected. And we had snow, you know, I don't know how many feet or inches of snow we had, but it was a lot. And I got out finally. The snow people came to clear our driveway, and as I entered into the driveway to go out to our mailbox, I had a letter from our zoning department, particularly Inspector Amanda Granaco. And that letter stated that my car was abandoned and that I could not have an abandoned car in my driveway. So we have a straight driveway to our garage, a two-car attached garage to our home, and then we have a circular driveway, all asphalt. And so I was confused because we don't have any abandoned cars. But as I read the letter more in detail, it stated that our car was abandoned because of a flat tire and a commercial license plate on the car. I don't know how the inspector saw that because we were still covered deep in inches of snow. So I had to shovel the snow myself to get out there to see what she was talking about, and the tire was low. It absolutely was low. However, it was not abandoned. We were not aware that the tire was low because of the snowstorm. So to make a long story short, I called Inspector and spoken to her. Unfortunately, she was very rude towards me, not polite at all. Within that conversation, I stayed professional, as I always do, and I asked her, I said, how did you see, you know, my tire low when my, it's a transit vehicle, and I brought a picture for you all, when it's parked all the way up to the door of the garage and we had snow? She said she was just riding down the street and happened to notice it. Then she also stated that I could not have a commercial plate on the transit. And I thought, hmm, okay, it's not wrapped or anything, and we drive it quite often. When my husband's able to drive, that is one of his forms of transportation. So to save time, I said I do not want to argue. What do I need to do? She said I had to change my license plate to a regular license plate. I thought, well, that's weird because the neighbors right next door to me have the same vehicle, which I brought a picture of today, with a commercial license plate. So that sparked my interest, so I went door knocking, and I asked the neighbor next door, had you been contacted or have you gotten a ticket from the ordinance department? And they told me no. So I called her back and explained that, and of course, she was very rude again. So to save time, I just changed my license plate. We had to pay over $200 to change our license plate. However, the neighbor next door was not approached to change theirs. So I thought this was over, but no, it was not. Three days later, I got a second letter in the mail stating that I'm in violation of ordinance code A, B, C, D, E, F, G, whatever she stated, and that I have three storage sheds in my backyard. Yes, I do have three. I tried to explain to her why I had those storage sheds. She said it doesn't matter, I'm in violation of ordinance A, B, C, D, E, F, G. And this is where I'm at now. I'm in a battle, I feel, and I feel that this battle is unfair, and I feel that the battle is color coordinated. I'm going to be honest. I took a poll. I drove around for at least a week. I have over 25 pictures of other homes that have worse or more or the same equivalent than I'm being condemned for, that I'm being written tickets for, which I'm forced to hire an attorney to help me to fight and pay funds that I do not currently have. Even today, I came down, they said I needed to file a Board of Zoning Appeals application. Now, my court date is this Thursday, so no judgment has been rendered, but they said I need to file an appeal. So I'm kind of confused. Why would I file an appeal when a decision hasn't been rendered? So I called, I talked to Supervisor Dennis, and forgive me, I'm not familiar with his name, but he's Dennis, and he's supervisor of the zoning department. And Dennis said, I had to fill out the application. He did go over the application over the phone. I said, great. The home is in my husband's name, but I am owner also, and I'm on the title. So with the being of my husband's name, he said he had to fill it out. I said, no problem, I will be assisting him. My husband is handicapped. And I said, how can he submit this? Is there an email or fax? He said, no. I said, well, do you have reasonable accommodations? Because he's handicapped. He told me, no. That is a violation of our ADA compliance. How do we not have reasonable accommodations? How would that make an undue hardship? Yes, ma'am.
We've exceeded the five minutes, but I'm, no, do not apologize. Do we have somebody from zoning here now that can work this through?
We do, Mayor, and Mrs. Godfrey, is that your name? I'm sorry, I'm a little hard of hearing. Our apologies for the difficulties you're having, and as Mrs. Godfrey stated, this is a, this is a pending district court case. Community Development Director Charmaine Kettler Schmaltz is here. She's in the audience, and I would encourage you to have a discussion with her in the hallway. So hopefully, we can address some of your concerns.
Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Am I correct, and this is the same house when you, you bought it? It had those accessory buildings on it?
It had one on it, yes, and I added an additional two. And she's now telling me that the one that's attached to the home is also illegal, and I need to tear it down or do something. Those were her words. And the other two is what I'm making court dates for now to get, I'm asking for variance. I guess that's what they said I had to do. It's just been very discouraging.
I can imagine. I can imagine. So can we put you folks together now? I don't want you to have to suffer through this.
I appreciate it, and I will stay as long as I have to.
Okay, so we're going to turn you over to our, our planning director and see if we can come up with some resolution for you. Obviously, you still have a court date, and you still have to go through all of those processes, and you may still have to file all of variants. But please keep us posted by email.
Yes.
And let us know what happens, and, and for the staff to do the same.
Yes.
And I'm so sorry for the difficulties you have.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it, and everybody, please have a great day.
And kindness matters, and you were very kind.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hello, Phil Mintz, live off Eastfield Street. Thank you for having this meeting. First, I wanted to start off by thanking Lori Brown and the Human Resources Department. Been very helpful in making sure that I'm updated on applications I've submitted. So I want to start off with that positive, but now I'm going to go a little bit negative right now. I have been applying here for about two, three months for positions within the city, and I still have not received any updates from them. Lori Brown has been on top, and when I call her up, she's been, she's been very good. She'll tell me, fly out, hey, we don't know, I don't know what's going on. That's all I want is transparency. And another thing that kind of drives me a little bit crazy is when I've seen a few job postings, I'm not going to name the specific departments or whatever, that says immediate opening. When it says it's an immediate opening, me as a job seeker will be thinking, hmm, maybe I might get a call within the next day or week or whatever, but then I still don't hear anything from anybody. So I just, it's, it's just frustrating as a job seeker, you know? When we're all trying to do our best with this economy that's hopefully kicking back into positive gear, hopefully soon, it's all I, it's, it's not right for the job seeker. And I understand government and large organizations can take longer to respond to, respond to candidates. I mean, I know the game. I know how it is. And yeah, I wanted to say that, and also I wanted to give a shout out to Jimmy Vias because I've talked to him a few times about certain positions. He's been responding to me within a reasonable timeframe, so I appreciate that. And the special, and the special services department, when I've had a few issues, have been very on top there with responding to me, even when I was upset. So just wanted to let you guys know, and once again, thanks again Lori Brown for all you do to make sure I'm updated. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We're very proud of Ms. Brown and the work she's doing. I know that we've had some, I've received some emails in the past before Ms. Brown was in her current position about applicants who were seeking jobs and then would hear absolutely nothing for three to six months, and I had passed that on to the city manager. Apparently, that's getting filtered through, and that's getting corrected at this point. But if there is an immediate job opening, you should not have to wait two months to find out whether you got the job or not. So thank you for coming forward, and we appreciate, we appreciate your applying. We really do. Thank you. Anyone else for public questions and comments? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and manager, city manager. Today, I'm here with my, some of my community members to invite the city of Farmington Hills to the two events that we are organizing, and it's open to public. First one is the Color Fest, which is celebrated traditionally in India for celebrating the univers, diversity and unity and harmony, where we are having colors thrown at each other just to, don't, you don't recognize who is who at the end of the festival. And it is also, there are, there is food being served, so it's open to public, and we have some invitations here that we want to pass it on to the council members as well. Today's meeting here, you know, we have heard this saying all along that everything happens for a reason and nothing is by chance. I was trying to get in touch with city manager and the mayor's office, and I sent them an email, but I, today morning, I happened to call, and Danielle said, oh, there is a meeting every second and fourth Monday happens. Why don't you just come and be there and invite them in person? So I took the opportunity, and just being here gives me a lot of happiness that I could do this in person on behalf of our community. We have been, also want to thank each one of you for having us the opportunity to have a temple in Farmington Hills. You know, I am a resident of Farmington Hills, and I go to the temple and the community center. That means a lot to all of us that are associated with this organization. So from the, you know, bottom of our heart, we are very thankful to all of you for having us the opportunity to pray and celebrate the different, you know, festivals that we put together. This one happens to be a unique and, unique one, and I would encourage each and every one of you, whoever is listening and maybe will be listening in the, in the future, to please come and, and join us and be part of our celebration. I also have an official invitation from our temple president for mayor, so I'll be giving it to you a little bit later. But if there is any other questions I can answer from any of you about the festival, I would love to do that at this moment. Otherwise, I am very grateful again for the opportunity to speak to all of you. Thank you, and Hare Krishna.
Thank you very much for the invitation. And for those of you who can't see it, they're very colorful for the Color Fest, so I'm really looking forward to it, and thank you for the personal invitation to all of us to enjoy. Yes.
I have a quick question.
Please.
So the Color Fest is August 26th from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Yes.
And then the Shri Krishna Jamashatami, that's September 6th to September 10th. What time is that, though?
Thank you. That's a nice question. It's actually, we are following the Vedic calendar, which is on the lunar ones. So the lunar calendar falls on a Venus day, and being in this, in the U.S., we have, weekends are the main time that we celebrate. So this is a five-day-long festival. June, September 6th is the real day according to, according to the lunar calendar, but the timing will be in the evening, like 5:00 to 7:00. On this, on, especially the September 6th, the celebrations will go till midnight because that's the particular time Krishna was born, the midnight, and there will be a special service offered at that time, and you will find the temple hall or the congregation hall will be filled at that time. I can assure you that. So anyone wants to witness that, be there by midnight. But other than that, September 7th and 8th, we have other community events are being, you know, lined up. We have magic show, we have, you know, things that kids could enjoy, the overall, the community would enjoy. So both of, both the festivals are free, open to public, and we seek any and all assistance and support in spreading the word if the city can offer. So I've been in touch with Ellen also at Hock, so, and she actually been very helpful. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you all. Any other questions?
Okay, I guess we're all questioned out and are looking forward to the festivals.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Thank you so much. Thank you. No one else? Okay, that brings us to council member comments and announcements.
Oh, I have one.
Sure.
Yes. I'd like to congratulate our own Rachel Timlin in special services. She was selected one of 15 individuals to be a cohort in the 2023-2024 Michigan Arts and Cultural Council, and that's really a big deal. And her, one of her focus will be to create in our community experiences in art that everybody can express and enjoy. So I'm looking forward to her participation in that and seeing exactly what she can bring back to our city.
Anyone else? Yes.
I apologize because I'm sure the city manager is probably going to talk about this, but today would be our assistant city manager, Joe Valentine, who's out here in the audience. It's his last council meeting. So Joe is moving on. He's going to be a city manager in another city on the east side, still in southeast Michigan, but east side, but hopefully we'll continue to work with you, you know, through other organizations. We'll see you out and about at MML or MML We'll see you out and about at MML or MML, Michigan Municipal League, events or conferences or other types of community events for southeast Michigan. So thank you for everything you've done here, particularly you've kind of been the, one of the leads for deer, all the deer complaints.
We're going to ship him all of our deer.
Yeah, I know. I was asking him if the city he's moving to or going to work at has a deer problem like we do, but, or has as many deer, but I don't think they do, actually, it sounds like.
They could use a few more.
So he won't have that issue over there, but we were joking, he's probably still going to have issues with the electrical grid and those issues that we have here in Farmington too, which kind of are all over southeast Michigan. So thank you for everything you've done here, and we'll miss you, but best of luck to you. And like I said, look forward to still seeing you around and keep us informed of how it's going in your new position.
I don't know why we're applauding. He's leaving. But we still like you a whole bunch. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. And that brings us to the city manager report update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just want to let everybody know that the city open house will be held on Sunday, October 8, from noon to 3:00 p.m. I believe that's rain or shine. That'll be here at the city hall campus. Our police department has added to the city's website a "What to Do When Stopped by the Police" informational flyer. That has been provided to us by the Michigan Association of the Chiefs of Police and has helpful information for our residents in the event that you are stopped by a police officer during your traffic stop. So hopefully, people find that useful. And I too would like to recognize our outgoing Assistant City Manager, Joe Valentine. This is your last council meeting, and just wanted to publicly thank you for your professionalism, your friendship, your efforts and your service to our residents, and that's obviously on behalf of our city council and all of your fellow department heads and staff. So we'll be missing you, Joe, but thank you for all your help. We appreciate it.
Do they know they need to get you a stand-up desk? Okay, well, make sure they do that, or you can come back. And that brings us to the end of the agenda. I know. Amazing, huh?
Oh, city attorney's report.
Actually, that's not on the agenda.
So on there? Oh, never mind.
But we could add it to the agenda.
Don't have any questions. I just...
Any questions for the attorney, just in case? Seeing none? Okay, we are now at the end of the agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
There's been a motion to adjourn. It's been made by Dr. Bruce, seconded by Councilmember Noel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Good night, Farmington Hills.